This is probably in good form.
Uh, environmental laboratories.
Something different. We'll see if it talks at home.
Okay, are we live?
This is our available environment. He got much info.
Testing, testing.
Testing, testing.
Okay, we are gonna mute.
All right, I'm calling the meeting order at 6:00 PM, June 30th. Good evening. This is a special work session, Nagga City Council. We'll call, go to Tom for here. Mike Nellin, President. One is absent, one is here. I'll be, it's quite a week.
The pleasure to the loving of the United States of America. And to the Republic from which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm gonna have a statement. Make, due to the unfounded and false allegations that were brought up on the June 9th meeting. About open meeting law violation. This is a statement. It's not for comment, debate, or questions. If concerned citizens do not wish to have their name attached to any complaints, it will be considered hearsay. As council member Dylan Topper stated at a meeting last year. People should have no fear of bringing up legitimate issues. This council will not listen to, debate, or take action on hearsay. Second point, the open meeting law was not violated. I have from the League of Minnesota Cities, it took me about two minutes to find this. I went to the LMC website. Click on resources, click on council meetings. Meetings of the city council. First page, third paragraph. Public body that is subject to the open meeting law must generally provide advance public notice of its meetings and hold them open to the public. The notice requirements depend on the type of meeting. However, if a person receives actual notice of a meeting at least 24 hours before it takes place, all notice requirements under the open meeting law are satisfied, regardless of the method in which the notice was received. Straight from League of Minnesota Cities. That took about 10 minutes. I verified with Brett and Kelly that notices had been sent out at least 24 hours in advance. So the concerned citizen could have been, this research could have been done, this concerned citizens could have been told they were incorrect. This would have stopped it right there. That would have been the end of it. Instead, we had a local paper that made a fine headline out of it. We could do without the negative headlines. Duty of the council is to the city as a whole. Protecting the city's reputation is important. Do research, have facts straight if you're going to publicly disparage the city. When council meetings are over, council members need to leave the property as soon as possible. If two or three council members are having a conversation in front of city hall after a meeting, what is the public perception? This could be considered an open meeting law violation. So please, when the meeting's over, get in your vehicle and leave the premises. You don't need thinking that we're talking about city business out there. You might be talking about a fishing boat, or a car, or a dog, or whatever, but perception can be that it's a meeting, you know, it's something taking place about city business. Perception's a powerful thing, so let's keep our city on a positive and upward trend. Fourth point is only topics that are on the approved agenda will be discussed at meetings. If it's not on the agenda, no discussion, debate, or action will take place. We have a spot at the beginning of the meeting to approve the agenda. You want something on the agenda? Bring it up and we'll get it on there if council so desires.
Point of order, Jody, is that the notice, you're right, is 24 hours. For a regular meeting, but it is three days for a special meeting.
Incorrect. Read your, read my.
I did. I went directly to the step. I invite you to go directly to the statute. I put it right, I read it right out of law. If it's a special meeting, it requires three day notice. A regular meeting is 24 hours. But once a regular meeting is canceled or changed, it becomes a special meeting, subject to the three day rule.
Barry, well, you missed the part where this was a statement and there would be no discussion, debate, and questions.
No, I heard, I heard that, but it's important, I get the fact. It's important to get the facts in front of the meeting and get them all correct.
I have new office department reports. Um, now let's do the SLA since you guys are here. Spirit Lake Association.
Yes.
Yep, uh, gentlemen, please come out.
Okay, I reached out to Jody. I'm part of the SLA and these are president and the treasurer of the SLA, which is Spirit Lake Association. Anyway, my communication with the mayor was that these gentlemen would like to present and update the city council as to what the SLA has been up to and basically what our mission statement is. Kurt Morrison, Coleman Foley.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Morrison and council for letting us speak for a few minutes today. Appreciate your time. Won't take too long, but just want to make an awareness that, you know, Spirit Lake Association just resurrected itself two and a half or three years ago. And it started because I was asking questions about the lake and you know, who looks into certain things and what about the weed problem? And that's kind of how it all started. So I recruited Coleman and Derwin and Scott Sogedal, so we started a Spirit Lake Association again, which had been in existence for a number of years. My mom was very involved in it and so we redid the bylaws and we've been involved in a variety of things. Because obviously it's our mutual interest that that's one of our greatest assets, the city of Monaga is Spirit Lake. So keeping that, the clarity and making sure that it looks good and we pay care of it, I think is in everybody's mutual interest. Coleman, treasurer, might tell you just some of the things we've done just recently.
Yeah, we've made some modest investments in the lake, first being to replace the Spirit Lake sign. We had lung signs do the work on it. We think it turned out beautiful. $500 to spend on that. Uh, we did support the Monaga School, the grade school, sixth grade class in a rad and garden project that just sits on the very front of the school. You'll see if you drive by it, about 71. And spent $679.30 there for a total of $11.79. And then our, looks like our next expenditure is going to be um, our cost sharing with the city of Monaga on the PLM weed control project that we undertook as homeowners. And we, I think we had 23 of the 51 homeowners, uh, supported you know, that process and, you know, thank you for the city for supporting that as well. So when you have that out ready, just send us an invoice and we'll we'll pay our agreed upon share. Which I believe was the net cost to the city, right?
Right, it was gonna be I think our share was gonna be $12.85. I think our share was gonna be twelve eighty-five. For the total of. Fishing pier all the way back towards the retention pond. I don't know, did they ever do the beach? Was that a permitting issue or?
So everything was approved. Uh, there was some square footage that was taken away. I don't know the exact details, uh. But it was a, uh, one of those things where they looked at it and they determined like, hey, we don't actually need to do it all. Based on what was already purchased. Uh, the total cost for the addition was approximately a thousand dollars. Uh, in which case, um. We're gonna take care of this, this week and we'll, we'll get an invoice out to you. On behalf of that.
Did the V F W donate seven fifty?
They did, to the city's portion, so we'll owe the V F W, uh, refund as well on that.
Once they, once they invoice you well.
Resolution, you should make it for the correct.
Yes, sir. Yes.
So then my question, Brett, would be, uh. If they lessen the square footage, our commitment then for the S L A would be a little bit less as well?
Correct. Yes, uh, five hundred dollars is a, uh, it's five hundred and thirty-six approximately is what, what you, S L A's can owe. So significantly less than the, the twelve eighty-five.
Okay, that's good as well.
Okay. One of the other things we wanted to bring up too, uh, just to make an awareness of is the retention pond. We tried to get some more information on that before this meeting and we didn't, weren't able to find out exactly, but. We're trying to find out who originally paid for that. And it might have been the Spirit Lake Association. As he came across an invoice for. About seven thousand dollars, right?
Yeah, we found the expenditure back in two thousand and seven. I know that kind of correlates with when the retention pond was put in. I wasn't here, so I couldn't tell you, but I talked to Nancy Day and she thinks that's about the, you know, about the time it happened. And, um, we paid a bill for seventy-six hundred ninety bucks. So I don't know if that was a portion, you know, um, uh, of the expense or. Doesn't seem like it'd be enough to build a retention pond, but.
I think there was, it was a joint venture in between the city and I think the S L A was part of it. And I think there might have been another party involved, I'm not even sure, but I don't know the history. A lot of that historical stuff has come and gone with people change over staff and.
And that's the last time I came and spoke to the councils. I was trying to find out what the maintenance schedule was. And for that, because there's supposed to be regular maintenance, but. And so far, no one's been able to find it. So as part of the reason we're here is just to. Bring awareness to the fact that, you know, if we don't do anything, it's not going to serve its purpose to help maintain the quality of the lake. So. Whether we can find it or you guys can find it or somebody has to make up. Um, some type of maintenance schedule for it.
Seemed like we were digging for that last year. Did anything come with that, Ron?
No, I don't think so. Two years ago, it got done out by, um. We do that or?
Jeff single day.
Yeah, single, well, that's playing that up two years ago and then last fall I had, um, white come in and vacuum out the sand.
Oh, we never did actually find a maintenance.
There's not a whole maintenance schedule of that.
So it's something we should work on. Get one in place.
One other issue too, that Kurt brought to my attention. I haven't been down, down there maybe a year and a half. There's that pathway that goes from the fishing pier all the way back to the beach area. And you can speak to that because I think you and Vicki were down there.
Particularly with structures of it, yeah, there's just a bunch of potholes and it's kind of really, you know, it's on it down there yesterday. So it looks like it's kind of a hazard, yeah. If some kids, because the kids usually run from the beach over to the pier. Which is nice, they don't have to go up on the street. But, you know, it could be a hazard, I suppose, with all the potholes and everything. Well, I know, not all of it, but I think.
Some of those holes have been drilled several times and they just keep.
Yeah.
Keeps going.
Yeah, keeps it rolling away. I would tell you that in my opinion, the concrete, uh, work looks fantastic, you know, it's holding up, you know, ten times as well as asphalt. So maybe if there's gonna be a remedy, maybe re-concrete that path. Uh, short up a little bit, that'll solve the, solve the problem.
Well, your, your thought would be to take out blacktop that's there, the existing blacktop and replace it with concrete?
Yeah.
I wonder if that's something we can work into that street project?
I do.
And it's, they're gonna be doing that street in front of the lake or eventually whenever we can get some grant money for it.
That's what you think.
We could put that in.
That was, we need to discuss with the engineer.
What's next? Definitely try to come up.
Was it to be replaced, like fixed with asphalt or concrete?
Uh. It was to be redesigned and try and put it so that path, so that it's not going to actually be an exposed pond. That there's going to be structures to suck out and that on the path can go over top. The.
Those parts, I understand that those vaults were, you know. Almost look subject things.
Cause that's an also aspect. There's a grant health, hope there for, um, for that too. So.
That's my understanding. The funding is quite a ways out because I think we're. On the priority list, we're in the high two hundreds. There's two hundred and fifty other projects ahead of us. So is it one of these things that maybe we just get an estimate on what it would cost? And I don't know if that's something. We as S L A can talk about trying to help cost share that maybe, or would the city be willing to?
We should work with the city engineer to see what his plans were before we knew something that would get tore out. You know, so that it would work into that project. So you know what I mean? We don't just replace what's there and then their plan was to take it out and do something different. Built into their project. So we just, we'd have to make sure with the city engineer that. Whatever, whatever we do is something that would fit in. Not have to get redone again.
Yeah. Yeah, we just want to raise awareness about it. Yeah, sure.
No, it's, it's bad. Like I said, I was, I was with my son yesterday and we took our bike.
Yeah.
I thought it was.
Hard to ride here, right?
I thought it's just, yeah, I was going like this, you know, trying to avoid those massive puddles because I didn't want to embarrass myself.
Right, right, right.
The spectacle, but nevertheless, no, you're right on the money. That is, that's bad news. One, one other just thought on that. Was you, you meant, currently it's, it's asphalt. You mentioned concrete, which I think does hold up better, hands down. Um, nevertheless, wh- what if there is a, an option? Of having it, uh, raised. And having it more of like a, like a parkway, uh, like a path. You see that up, Bemidji, you see that up even in I task estate part where it's wood.
Oh, yeah.
Boardwalk, right? The boardwalk, yep. And so it's kind of elevated a little bit. Doesn't have to be like this big, you know. But it's off the ground. So when the ground fluctuates, there's a little bit more give where it doesn't just wash out. I, I don't know, I'm not an engineer, but it's.
Not, that would look nice.
It would look nice. It would fit the, you know, really decor of what's going on, being lakefront. Uh, and then the other section, the other part is that that section is not really that big, you know, it's, it's not like we're talking. Forever long, you know, all the way around a, it's just from, you know, so it might be something that's justifiable. Sooner than later, and I don't know costs. I'm not trying to speak outside of my.
Right. Well, that's something you guys can toss around. Figure out.
So is there any fix we can do to make it safe? Move the class five back in those little puddle? I haven't been down there, but you said it pretty well washed out.
Right, yeah, I got some extra. Where it, it may be cracked, it kind of rippled up, so there's, I mean, you could get some air. To go down there on a bike and.
Ron, do you know how many times those bottles have been filled already?
Four different times. This, this spring, it's not. Not been, but last year. Four different times, but.
And the other thing you have to keep in mind too is the vegetation as it reestablishes itself, uh. I put a big, couple of big berms in for pond projects on my own property and that engineer from the Corps of Engineers said you never want any. Growth of trees where the roots come in and they'll compromise the integrity of the dirt berm.
Right.
And I think that's what you had Jeff take on a few years ago, right? Are those trees coming back?
There's some few of smaller ones that don't come back through.
Are you gonna mitigate that by spraying them or cutting them back or?
I'm cutting them back.
Yeah, I don't want to spray.
No, the other thing for consideration.
Right, one last thing. First of all, thank you to whoever's been shoring up the boat launch. You know, that, uh, you know, I talked about that a couple of weeks ago, this looks like good, but it always, it keeps it rolling away. Is there any consideration? The lake is down, uh, probably near all time, well, I don't know. I mean, it looks like it's really low. Could we extend that, um, launch cement pad?
We talked about that last year and it's something with the D N R. You can only go so many feet from the high water mark. Out into the lake and I think we're, are we there, Ron? Or we're really close to it?
We're really close to it. That's why they couldn't put it anymore.
Yeah, because I thought we had talked about putting some more of those concrete planks in.
Cause when they poured that.
Gets tricky.
But with all these.
You're just go out, yeah, yeah.
Right.
You guys know, being on the Lake Association about all the regulations.
I never did. Okay, well, that answers that. But anyway, thanks for the gravel, you know, we're just putting it down there as hell over.
That's all we had. Thanks for your time. Appreciate it.
Thanks for what you guys do down there.
Okay.
Brett confessed to saying how clear the lake is. He was just diving down.
Yeah, it was down about fifteen foot. And, uh, I mean, I could see clear as day.
Oh, yeah, the clarity is real nice.
Yeah.
You got.
Yeah, whatever's going on, it's working great. Uh, I mean, I, I couldn't believe it. I mean, I was surprised, so, uh, it was just really good to see. Yeah. Good.
Very good.
Thank you, guys.
Ron, you're up. Uh, Ron will be filling in, uh, and talking parts and rec for, uh, Brian. Brian's out this week.
Evening. You got me to read all the Brian's and Park from beginning there too?
Go ahead.
Okay. So month of June has been quite busy. Heat and rain, storms, moan and upkeep. Been consistent. Lots of storms have produced many branches, limbs and twigs fall upon the ground. So the park, beach and cemetery. Still in cleanup mode. Mostly be done this week. Please announce that the beach has been very full since we were able to install the floating raft and the lifeguards have been doing an incredible job. So when you think in the water fountain at the beach, we have had many people come up to the lifeguards. And me as to having water to drink at the beach. Ask Jay Brothers to give me just a quote on installing the water bottle drinking fountain at the beach. As with everything else, there are some projects that I will be getting into in hopes to cleaning up the ramp at the pier. To make it more pleasant to the eyes, such as removing the growing brushes or bushes. On the pier, beach and smoothing out the erosion of the hillside. Other than, other than that, everything is going as smooth as we could help.
Uh, one of the things I can definitely say is, uh, on the council's last discussion about this, we wanted the campground and the beach for one of these water bottle. Water bottle fillers and we, we turned them down. I talked to Brian about this and. Uh, he, he came back and, uh, said, hey, can we just have it for the beach? I said, no, um. And I need you to do better. And I know we have a water fountain that's still just in a box and, uh. I told Brian about that. He reached out to Jay Brothers. It's not on paper yet and this was just a verbal, but they said they'd be willing to deal with us and take a trade in with it as well. So, uh, I don't know the exact amount of how much it's going to offset, but I, I believe. It, the number, uh, that was socialized was between, uh, four, six hundred dollars. But I, I can't, I, I. I don't know if that's what we're shaking on it.
Why don't we move this to the July fourteenth meeting, then when we have some correct figures?
Okay.
Talk about a look at some.
Table.
It's actually good stuff, stuff. Hold in writing on what they would give us for the.
Okay, now you're up. So, uh, consumer to confident report. Was put in the newspaper. Got all the affidavit back. Sent to the Department of Health. That's been finished off. Like it said in the newspaper, people are wanting paper copies. We do have paper copies in the office that they could come and get a copy for themselves. Secondary pond treatment was done and discharged. Finishing up tonight. Be heading out there to turn it off. Can only run it until the thirtieth, so tonight was my last. Um, I was down to about four feet, so I was hoping the rest of the day I could get down at least another four inches, so. Yeah, roads, roads are formed and graded. And chloride's going to be getting applied. I mean. There were more, they had this rain, now they got a, there are a few more washouts areas, rumbles. Graded again, they'll be grading again, hopefully coming tomorrow. They want to get the chloride done before the fourth. So if we get this decent weather, if we can get decent weather that they can come and. Get them finally graded up bar and chloride put before we get a real big downpour again. Alleyways in cemetery. Backblading. The constant thing with them. I know there's more alleyways behind Shell. B F W, I know there's potholes formed all over again. And I have class five, I have, uh, crushed concrete also. Been kind of mixing, blending the two and it's been actually creating a good base. To fill in them and not been washing out and creating so many potholes by doing it that way. Um, hydrants, we finished up flushing them on Friday. Got a good scour with them. Got that automatic, uh, flusher out on eighty-seven constantly. It does it every morning, forty-five hundred gallons. Keeps that water fresh.
So it ended up by us here's up there?
Yeah. Um, kind of. Talking to engineer about another one. Cause I, I gotta bring it through the engineering process first when we, when we work on automatic flushers on, uh, dead ends. So I'm going to be talking to, talking to Chris about that to get another one put in another, um, different dead end area.
So we just don't, we, there's not looped, right? That's the.
Just not looped, so yeah, it's all that. Not loop, not a very, uh. Busy area. So all that water just then stays in about two hundred feet. Section of some of them areas where there's no house and then they got the fire item. So it's just that water stays in there and kind of goes stagnant throughout time. Doesn't constantly move. So then I'm under different areas, try to get the water, keep on on running. Then, uh, working on filling in puddles, so tomorrow. We're gonna be hitting, hitting more of the puddles. May got. Me and Julian can tell them, so. We're gonna be trying to hit that. And then we got a line strapping, looking on Wednesday, Thursday for that.
Get this one in front of. Second street, it's pretty bad.
Oh, it bottles, yes. Oh.
Would you get a bid for getting our scraper fixed?
I haven't looked into that yet. I've been all over, so yeah. I'm, I'm being looking at that, but. We do have, um, cans and just one of them regular, put the cans in and walk behind. Trigger. That we've been using for parking lots, parking lots and stuff like that. Just had to get that bigger one so that we can. Be able to do, um, happy hour bike path. Instead of keeping on contract and that all. Water plant quarterly maintenance, it's on schedule. Looking on. Uh, next week for that. And then, uh, talked with the office personnel about the generator issues. Um, they have to, we, I have to be able to speak to the technician when they are on site.
You need to refresh us on what the issues are.
Um, anytime it trips over to go from. Power did, power goes out, generator kicks on right away. Well, it's not giving enough, enough delay. For the. High service pumps. So it'll trip the high service pump and, uh, make it fail. So it'll fault it out.
Are those on V F Ds, those pumps?
Yeah. So it'll tread, it trips that, trips that V F D every time that it does it. Cause then the generator tries kicking on right away. And then it'll do it on the other aspect too. So if the high service pumps do kick on when it's, when the generator's running. And then the generator kicks off. The trips the power on and the power trips them V F Ds. So we got to have some type of relay installed in there. Whether it's time relay or something that's gonna.
Well, they should be able to delay the generator coming on. That'd be the easy part. To give them V F Ds time to ramp down. But on the other end of it, when the power comes back on, I don't know.
That's what's, that's what's more happening with, uh, faulting out, faulting out the V F Ds. But anytime the power actually goes off and then it chips on the. Generator, running off, running off the generator works, but as soon as it goes out, power senses that power's on. It kicks it right away. And then that's causing the, so there's another. Probably two different leg lays that have to be added in there. Probably two differently at least that have to be added in there.
Is this a Bergstrom issue, the ones that installed it and that we had bought it from?
Generator, the generator guys, the program.
So we actually bought the generator through Bergstrom, so right?
Very strong.
The warranty on it, or is it the engineer or the? Generator people that are ordering the warranty? So this is all under warranty?
Um, that, that'll be a question through the technician when he gets here all, all the recall.
Should be something because if it's not working correctly for our needs, something's. Correct, something's not.
Yeah, when you inspect out the generator, they should have looked at what we had in place and they should have been aware. Of what was needed to make it functional, correct? So I think that would be a warranty thing, and I think you better push that on to the small warranty work.
Speaking of which agrees. Right?
Yeah.
I mean, if you don't mention it, they're not going to offer it probably.
And this does that once a week, right? It does its test run?
Yes.
So it's doing it every time it does that or almost every time probably?
Yeah, every time, yeah. Yeah, every time that it. Does the generator test.
And then you have to manually reset?
And then when we get power outages, it ends up doing it too.
Right now, we're, we're not, uh, foolproof. The power goes out, there's nothing to put water in the tower.
There is, we end up coming in. The generator's running, but we just have to, we come in and reset the VFDs. So it's not foolproof that you don't need a person on hand.
Do you have a radio frequency that notifies you that it's not running?
Yeah, that calls, it has a call out system.
Calls you and lets you know, okay. Which is an added expense to the city. Every time you call low, it's costing us money, right?
Yeah, with that. Um. Anymore on the generator? I'll, I'll give more information together and hopefully the, I'm going to be calling the technician tomorrow, see where their schedule's lying also.
I didn't think they would have had to have run into this before somewhere else. I mean, we, we don't have an hot ball system. So there's got to be an easy fix to it, I would think.
Uh, Johnson Jetline finished their jetting and camera. So we've noticed that there's different areas. Of sags and pipes and, uh. Separations, but we've been constantly, um, watching when we camera. And watching this different areas, how much if it's changing. Where it's not changed, so it's not a drastic issue at this point in time. There's different sections of the pipe, Brett, Brett seen it also. There's probably an. About a ten foot area of sag. And then a different area that where, um. It looked like when they, somebody bored into the pipe or did a cut into the pipe for a service line. That part of the pipe busted. That's where this camera and everything does come in handy, making sure we can. Watch these areas. So on third street is one area, sixth lane is another area that has them issues. And we can't line it because just lining them areas, it would just follow the way the pipes going. So it just.
They used, on the area said the pipe is broke, did he put a saddle on it? Or how'd they, uh, tap into the man?
They tap, cut it, cut into it and, uh, yeah, put a saddle or put.
So he says broke the whole pipe? Is broke, or is it just cracked?
It's cracked along there. And then it's separated from this, uh, seam. So it's, it's. It's pulled out and then it's been settling.
With the union where the two pipes come together is separated.
Separated.
Where the saddle. Service comes into the main.
Mm-hmm.
Is that a dig down and cut off those and fix it type of thing or what?
Yeah, that's what we'd end up having to do, have to dig out the, dig out the whole road and.
Okay.
Imagine that's creating a. Water pocket there now, pothole. It'd probably be an empty area, they're pretty similar, something will start settling.
It's going to get worse and more water infiltrates that area, it's going to keep settling it down. But you said right now it hasn't changed much in the last couple?
Yeah. In the last three years.
Okay.
That's why it's just keeping a, keep an eye if there is any signs of infiltration in that area or anything else. But there's not been any big signs of infiltration. There's a lot of grease. In them pipes. So need more awareness of, uh. Don't, don't be flip, uh, putting all your grease down the, down the drains. And bike did come and clean out catch basins and for lift stations. That one, uh, beach, beach house. With that. Airator and degreaser is working good. We didn't have to worry about design to pump that one out. And it is feeding the main lift station also and all the grease that used to always be collapsed on the walls. Of that lift station is not.
Good.
So that degreaser is doing, doing its job.
Good. Then we talked about that because it's kind of an investment, right? To go this route.
Mm-hmm.
But, uh, I mean, it's paying off, so that's really good to hear.
Yeah, because they, they didn't have to spend as much time as they usually would. They do nine lift stations with, I had them do four. It'll be next year, I'm rotating another with four. So it only took them a five day. Five hour process, five, six hour process instead of a day and a half. So it did save, save the city on them funds. They're on two thousand dollars.
I noticed the other day they were washing the bridge of, of Poon Lakes, must be a county thing. Come here and fill up out of this hydrant. Where the water tower. We keep track of, is that kept track of water, you know, how much water is being used because it comes through your big meter, right?
We, we bill them, yeah.
So we give.
Yeah, they, they pay up the spot.
Okay.
I just wondered, cause I saw them pull up my, um. They got a river right where they're washing the bridge.
No, I, I, I can't remember the whole conversation. I heard snippets of it, but there, there was some rule where they, they couldn't draw from the river. They had to come here.
So drill pens, ten frames that can't draw too much from the river either.
Yeah, you were even asking about going to the lake and it's like, no, just. Hydrant.
Now, when you do those hydrant flushers and where you're doing that, you're keeping, you say that's forty five hundred gallons a time or whatever you've got it sunk.
Yeah, I have, I have it wrote on my sheet. It's. We end up doing it's roughly forty five thousand to sixty thousand gallons. Every, every day of flushing. So. I do have it wrote down of how many gallons was ran through.
Forty five, sixty thousand every day or is that?
During, during flushing day.
That's only once or twice a year?
Yeah. So it took five days, it's roughly. Five times.
Three hundred fifty thousand.
And, and reading for the button in brief would be.
We're scour, scouring our pipes. Get all. Iron, any iron fat buildup or anything calcium. Off of the pipes.
So that it's needed. They work. Probably you, you.
Well, it's, it's a drinking water too. I mean, it's, it's the same water line.
Oh, it is.
All the dollars up for the houses to scour.
Oh, I see.
Department of Health has it regulated, it's. Twice a year that we have to. Flush hydrants.
What have you heard about, uh, the latest on fluoride treatment? Are we going to be able to regulate our own fluoride treatment?
But as of now, it hasn't really got passed.
Uh, I know there was legislation, uh, I think it was in the senate. Uh, I haven't looked, uh, I haven't looked at it, uh. Weeks. But, uh, I'm, I'm. Periodically watching it.
And the last time they were saying that it could be, could be up to the city if they do pass this bill. That would be up to city recommendations of what the city wants to do. So. Hopefully the bill does pass because our floor, our fluoride. Natural fluoride is high enough to meet what Department of Health is telling us. If they bring it down to a point two, right now they're still saying point four, five and above. But if they finally decide to say, okay, we can go down to a point two, yeah. Our natural fluoride is about that. It's a point two eight to a point three four. Depends on our two wells.
Also, Greg, we're all. Excellent. Oh. And Chief Lane.
Hello. It's June fourth to June twenty fifth, we had a hundred and sixty nine falls. Um. Citation, state citations, we had two speed, one driving after revocation. One expired registration, one no proof of insurance and one window tint. Our administrative city citations, we had one exhibition driving and four speed. Mileage on the squad car, you guys can see there. Um. Miscellaneous information, I had nothing on there, but I just wanted to update you guys. I found out after I submitted this that. Finally, two years later, our nuisance property on Tenth Street Southeast, that's set for a three day jury trial coming up.
Three trial?
Yes.
What was the address of that?
It's the address on Tenth Street Southeast.
Yeah, that's been put off.
It's been two years. Bringing it along.
Then which, which of the vehicles did you get thrown in line with?
The Tahoe.
Oh.
Yes. We've had unfortunately some vehicle expenses. Again, I had to get brakes and rotors. Brakes put all the way around on mine, front rotors. Routine maintenance, um, the Tahoe, the front right tire was chewing off again. So we ended up doing front tires and then we did the alignment at Schaefer's. We normally go to Seveek and have it done, but we thought we would give Schaefer's a try and see how it goes.
Questions? Sure. But it's an example of exhibition driving. Just wondering what that term means in relation to this.
So that would be, uh, say, for instance, last week we had somebody whipping donuts in the beach parking lot. Stuff like that.
Like this, yeah.
She will.
Yeah. Doing kid things.
And then the jury trial, the date is set?
Yes, it's been reset several times.
Set for when?
Uh, second week of July. Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. So we'll see what the outcome of that is. I think we need to have some further conversation. Um. Depending on how that goes as far as the civil end of this. The abatement. Because unfortunately that property has only gotten worse in the last two years. And my hands are tied with it on the criminal end of it. So.
This is. Uh, they're setting, but I don't know what we're talking about.
Or it allows, uh, city to do cleanup and build the property over there.
Correct.
But that has not yet been done.
Nope. Cause we have attorney fees that go into that and there's a whole bunch of stuff that goes into it, so.
There's a lot of stuff stacked up.
There's a process we have to follow.
Start and start and start and start and it's been. Started in small stacks and now it's very large stacks. It's covering half of the property. A neighbor said complained over and over and over.
And I've told him it's in court. My hands are tied with it. There's nothing more I can do with it, so.
But you mentioned criminal.
So charged, what is the charge? Uh, jury trial is over.
Misdemeanor nuisance property.
There's the misdemeanor.
And that's why it's been put off so many times because they don't feel that it's a priority, you know, for the court, it's not a priority. For our little city, it's kind of.
Yes. It's an eyesore and a lot of people want to see it cleaned up, deservably so.
And what is the process the city has to follow in order to go in and haul the junk away and clean the property up?
Well, that's lined out or laid out in the ordinances. There's a process as far as he or the homeowner has to be served the paperwork. Um, our civil attorney gets involved in that and they have X amount of days to get it cleaned up.
And you have to store that stuff for how long?
Thirty days? I'd have to look.
We just.
We got, we got moving back here to do it.
So it's like, it has to be secure storage.
Yeah.
We could just a big semi and just load it all up in there. Is that it?
It might fit.
Yeah, our attorney would, civil attorney would guide us on that. It's a costly, long. Process. So otherwise we probably would have jumped on that earlier, but. Try to be optimistic and give people the benefit of the doubt that, hey, we're gonna, you know, show me a little bit of improvement as it goes. And then unfortunately this one just kind of. And it got worse.
Hmm.
Real quick. So.
Never, never coming up. I noticed there's a. Places that you've already been on that. Grass, the grass being tall.
So here's the thing with our ordinance, it says weeds, not grass.
Something in there, twelve inch.
But we looked at that last year. So, but yes, we normally. I don't want to say a week before the parade, but close to the parade. Around that time, if there's anybody on the parade route or anybody right in town, they get talked to. Normally gets cleaned up. If not, then public works will go out and mow. So.
Do we bill them?
Mm-hmm.
Hmm, okay.
Mm-hmm.
But if they're not violation.
Last year.
If they're not in violation, how can we bill them for something that they're not acting in an illegal?
Most people just.
No, I get it. I'm just wondering to answer your question.
I don't have an answer.
I'm sure there's a reader to them.
We can always find one.
Drop a dandelion.
Yeah.
A lot of my.
Uh, we'll make sure it's cleaned up and. Sounds good.
One, one question or observation, which I think you're trying to address, but it's, uh. By not being real successful. We've got, uh, Jake Bear, Jake Brake Ordinance coming in on eighty seven. It's, you know, just brought out to the city limit line.
Yep.
But anyway. The Monaga City. Green sign is just on our driveway, basically. But my question is, do you think people aren't observing that, uh, noise violation thing because they don't see the city limit line? Sorry, the city's.
I think as a truck driver, they are well aware that this is not allowed in city limits. I think they just don't.
Yeah, they do it coming in from the north through the.
Yeah, they do it all the way through town.
Is there a Jake Brake sign on eighty seven?
Noise ordinance.
There's a noise, what does it say exactly?
No, it's. Uh, noise. Or it's in forest or something like that, yeah. So they, they know eighty seven, was it last summer they were doing the construction out there? It was horrid with the trucks coming in hauling all that dirt from out into Becker County. I actually went out there. And talked to the supervisor of the work site and let him know that if there was any more of that going on, that we were just going to start. Piling tickets on everyone that came into town and that was the end of it.
Hmm.
But there's. I mean, not only the Jake braking, I understand that that's. Irritating to listen to. We try to make it out there once or twice a day to sit in a little fighting.
I've seen you guys on site, yeah, I think you're trying to, I think you're trying to remedy it, but it's, you can't be there all the time.
No, and it's, I've told.
It is a public nuisance to hear that continuing that.
Yes. Yep, no. It very much so is.
Spot you found too.
I love that spot. I'll show it to Joe the other day and Joe just like discovered it. I'm like, where have you been the last so many years? Like. This is a spot twenty years ago.
But I guess my question being, would it help to put a Monaga City limit sign right underneath that? Noise?
I don't think it would. Because. I, I just.
Not a big green one, but just saying.
Maybe we had something that lit up. Something blinky because it's like when, when we got the state last summer to put their digital speed sign out there. That helped.
Hmm.
And then the battery went dead, so I called the state. To ask them to replace it. Well, then they just came and took the sign and never brought one back. So there's an individual that lives out there that calls on a regular basis and complains. Because they're concerned that somebody's going to get hit. On, there's, you know, very small shoulders on both sides of the roads out there and, you know, I, I told it's a state highway. So we can't just go stick signs wherever we want out there. And, um. What I'm hoping is our digital speed sign that is supposed to ship today, I got the email. Um. Hopefully we can fix that old one that got taken out. And maybe be able to. Put it. Eighty seven is just a bad spot. You know, and it's, I, I tell this individual that calls, it's like, we understand it's a bad spot. It has been for years with speeding. Uh, with the Jake braking, but it's no different than the. Uh, with the Jake braking, but it's no different than the complaints we get on the south side of the town, north side of town, people blowing through stop signs over here, up on. Cottonwood, like, there are complaints every area of town, and if you live there, you know. That it's a problem area. So we try to get to different areas of town, obviously with stop signs, you see us parked there, everybody's gonna stop. We, we're not gonna witness that, Jake braking, we deal with that, we stop people.
What was that, do we have a fine for that?
So if you write them on the, it would be the seventy five dollar ordinance citation.
I know if you would start ticketing truck drivers, the word would get out through the trucking industry, that's when you go through Monaga.
Yeah, they have a Facebook page. They have a Facebook page for, you know, DOT inspections and law enforcement that writes anyone and make sure that they post our pictures on there and stuff if we're hiding.
The amount of the fine out there with the sign. Might get some lose attention.
Is it great? Like, that side of where you're at, so you're coming around the corner there? And then all of a sudden, oh, you're kind of in town, so that's when they.
Yeah, it's like the eight hundred block.
Coming in from the north, I mean, it's fifty and there's thirty at the bridge and they're still Jake breaking up the shell.
Yes.
It isn't like they cancel. I was a truck driver. I never, never rolled the Jake breakthrough down.
Yeah, I drive semi too, I don't Jake breakthrough towns, I just lose my brake and slow down. Anyway, I just brought that up because I just thought maybe if they knew where the actual city limit was, uh, limit is, they would. Not be Jake breaking, coming around that curve, but.
Maybe we could try moving it.
That was put there through Minda.
Oh, never mind.
Name, when I'm just saying, put a small city limit sign right below the. Say what? Well, this is part of the process.
Yeah, why isn't the sign out by Willow?
Talk to the DOT and tell them what's, what's, what's the limit starts.
I have had people tell me I'm out of my jurisdiction and I'm like, no.
So where the sign that says Monaga City?
By his voice and city limits is just past.
On that side of Rennerburg?
Willow that goes to the south, like where Phyllis Rennerburg lives, that's city limits and then everything.
That's where Rennerburg is, like, if you're gonna go south, that is the city limit.
Then, goes down by your brother's place?
Right before Rennerburg, it's like where the employees turn in to go to pay the back way to the office.
Oh, I know what you mean.
Yes.
That's really weird that they would put that there.
Yeah, most of the time you're.
First of all, it makes our city look smaller. That anybody cares, but I had no idea.
That would get maybe them to slow down for the park.
I think that's the one that they've posted on that.
Other than that, Source Wells fiscal year's opening soon, I plan on applying for. One grant, just the two thousand dollar grant for ammo and our less lethal ammo. For that, um, I did get that earlier this year for the transmission, but. Uh, it shouldn't be a problem getting that one again. I'll see what else is out there.
Any other questions, Ross? You got a good one?
Thank you. Good evening.
And I apologize, uh, it's Terry.
Oh, you have Dave.
Yeah, I have Dave on there, uh, I apologize.
He's gonna get involved with those sessions and open. Our treasure, I'm sorry, but, uh, first of all, um. Um, through June, we had one car accident, one power line down, those were the two calls, uh, seventeen calls year to date. We did, I know I haven't been here for a couple of months, um, there with me, but I just wanted to break through these, uh. Our current roster, we had one fellow retire this year. Um, just, uh, like a month ago, Eric, I looked at it twenty years and put it's retirement and. We had two people that believed that weren't, uh. And was not passed, uh, probation and he's no longer with us. And then one guy, I believe Craig had a few years on, but he's decided to call it this too, but. He leaves us with twenty one members current, so we're in good, good faith there.
Are you recruiting now or?
Uh, I wouldn't say actively, but we, as members of the department, we all, we're sort of, we know people or people know us, they. Contact us, we have one potential, he's really not in our area that. Down in the Auburn area and it's a little bit out of our district, so.
You know, not within five minutes of responding.
Well, that's the old adage, but with today's. Volunteering being as low as sometimes we make, you know. The old rule was you had been in civil limits or, and then it was the fire district, well, our fire district is. A lot of times outside of five minutes, so we can't reuse the five minutes. And a lot of people that live out of town, working town and vice versa, so it's more, you have to look at them as a whole and see if. They make a fit and if the response is, you know, within reason, without being dangerous, so. And that's one, and he works out of town, if he worked this way, it would be a, a better example, but he works the other way too, so. Like I said, you know, right, anyone ever, so it's, it's not that we're in a hurt.
Full capacity. Like, what is a full?
Full capacity, we like to be around that twenty two, twenty four, twenty four is our max, wow, that's what since I've. Fifteen, sixteen, two, you know, we have been, so we're kind of in that happy medium.
What's your, what's your max from the age?
Our age is thirty, well, that's thirty five is retirement age.
So you're a new member, what's your max on name?
Uh, I think the old bylaws, I think we actually softened that, the old bylaws was. Thirty.
Thirty five is yet, cause then you.
You get twenty years in to hit fifty five. And reach full retirement, um, for the department, but.
But we've, we've like said, that, he just figures out with us.
We've had a few that, like, I think Aaron was above that, but he was a member of Wolf Lake and moved into town, just worked out really well to let him join.
We fluctuate on that a little bit.
Oh, yeah, considering it's voluntary, you don't wanna be overly regulated either.
Yeah, I, I don't feel you can't be, I mean, that's not a volunteer, you gotta look at the situation almost independently, you can't be. You know, no bias, but you have to openly look at them. And we bring, you know, if we have an interesting party, it's, it's not one person that makes it, you know, we, we kind of look at it department wise. And then ultimately I can make the decision, but we do look at it as a whole. And it's been working out pretty well over the years. Maintenance, um, for the month, don't mean to be jumping, but we did do our annual, um, pump test data, uh, pumping testing for forty eight, fifty five. Uh, forty eight, sixty one and forty eight, sixty two, those are three big bumpers, um. Just an annual thing that's done every year, um, that was completed this month. We had some air packs worked on, we have one air pack right now, it's at Grand Forks Fire, it's pack number thirteen, that's getting some. Uh, more in-depth maintenance on it, so some seals and stuff that one, weren't working, so that should be back, I would think this within the next couple of weeks.
So your pumps are all certified and?
Yeah, all three of them are good to go, everything passed good, um, actually it was really good this year, we had no leaky valve or anything, so it was, it was. It's actually a real good inspection this year, we didn't have to do any repair work, this was just a testing, so. Uh, our whole testing for that and the whole system did get delayed, um. They were set up for, I believe, last Saturday, but they had a breakdown, so. We don't know when they're gonna get back to us now, so I would guess it would be sometime this summer. Um, so, and then nothing really to worry about there, but it's just an annual thing that we try to do in the spring of the year or in the summer and. It's got the lady on their head, you know, the testing people, it's a, they've been very good, so. Things, and we should, uh, be worried about it happens. Other maintenance, real quick, before we get, I was brought to my attention, and this is before me, but, um, um, Assistant Chief Day had said that. Earlier that we have, I think it was last year, really, that we had looked at the door seals on all the garage doors out, on the. In the hall that were in ready for condition, and he just wanted me to bring it up to attention that. I think Ralph was gonna look at it or, or somebody, I don't.
I thought he actually got door seal for those. Check with Ralph. I thought he was getting door seal for them.
And all the reason I bring it up is just summertime would be the optimal time to do it, you know, I mean, you know, and you could see we'd daylight out a half of the night. We still have several months, but I just still wanted to let it slide, you know, into November, December, and we started looking at doing some of that, if we're gonna do something on it, so. I just wanted to bring that, so we can maybe get.
And that, on that point, Terry, whatever made, we put Snirt Stoppers, you know, singles advertisers. We did all of our doors out there and they're almost bulletproof.
Another guy mentioned those.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, yeah, it's something that's.
Yeah, Monty buyer, but he sold the company now, it's, you know, somebody. On settlement, so it bought the company, but I'm not saying buy that brand, I mean, it saves a lot of heat. You know, you don't have infiltrate some cold air in the winter.
What do they call them?
Snirt Stopper.
Yeah, they're.
Stop snow and dirt.
Also keeps rolling top.
They're very good.
It's not leather, but there's a jacket that goes over the. All they need is a hole this big, you know, that's all it takes.
So, that was on the maintenance and everything else, and another thing that is kind of on, on the fire department, I wanna let Robert speak of it, I think I spoke to. A little bit about, um, our, uh, retirement pension. And, uh, it's through the Relief Association and we're looking at going with the state on para investing. Instead of, we've always done it before and it's part liability on, on the fire department as well as the city. Um, we also run into an audit annually, which is costing between. Five grand, minimum five thousand a year, that's right, out of ours, so. Robert can just maybe brief this real quick with this pariaons, if you guys have. You know what's going on too.
So, yeah, it's under para, much like the schools, and I don't know if the cities are under that too, but, uh. It's a fund that's specifically for the fire, fire departments throughout the state, it's the, it's called the statewide volunteer firefighter plan. So, yeah, the reason, we had looked at this about five years ago. Uh, we decided not to go that role because once you're in, you couldn't get out, uh, I think that was a showstopper for a lot of departments, they changed that rule. But essentially, as it sits now, is the trustees of the fire department have a fiduciary liability, so. Market crashes and we lose all that money and one of the guys decides to sue us because we don't know how to, I'm not a financial planner, I'm an accountant, I'm not a financial planner. I don't want myself or anybody, the other trustees to be held liable if the market goes down. I don't, we, the investments are in the state board of investment. That's pretty much where they've been, uh, we have a little bit of money for the special fund in the bank. That's where they were when I took over as treasurer, um. And actually, the statewide volunteer firefighter plan holds all their assets there as well, so our investments. Would all transition to the control of the volunteer firefighter plan. Um, as far as what changes for the city, it's very minimal. Uh, you, the city currently has a liability, if we, we are in a underfunded status, that the city would have to. Bring the fund up to a point where we're no longer underfunded, uh, that liability stays the same. If, if we move over to the para plan. The city contributes three thousand a year, uh. I think essentially that's up to the city to decide based on where our funding status is, if you continue that. Our state, uh, fire aid that we get every year, that gets put directly into our special fund, now it's paid directly to the SBF. The main change, changes for the fire department are, uh, we. We give away fiduciary responsibility, I am no longer responsible for the performance of the fund, the state of Minnesota is the para fund is. Uh, we no longer have to do an audit, which, again, costs five thousand. Uh, I mean, when you start adding up the nine ninety and the audit, it's, it, it gets close to six, we just switched accounts because the previous one was. Becoming unaffordable.
Um, and on that aspect, to the greater. Say our funds continue to rise if they have, you know, not giantly, but if they get over a certain threshold, but that audit gets increased.
We go from.
So if we go over six hundred thousand or seven hundred.
Seven fifty.
In, in our, as a whole, you know, that audit goes up, they always gotta get that higher percentage, so I mean, it could be.
The regulation go from agreed on procedures, which. Is, it's audit light, I mean, they do most of the same things, but it's not audit. Once you hit seven fifty in assets, which, you know, if it's very, and some of the older guys hang around for another few years, we'll get close. Um, then it's a full on audit, which probably push it to a ten thousand dollar bill. Um, and this is. Much like today, the city decides what her benefit level is. Again, we, we have to, we kind of. Decide what we wanna request of the city now, that's essentially the same, anytime we want to. Quest that, uh, the SBF will go through and do a cost analysis that will be. Uh, much more accurate than what I could provide as far as what the market's gonna look like and what our, uh, future pension liability would be.
So is that done by an actuary then?
Uh, I, I would assume they have an actuary on staff that would provide those. We did, I suppose I should talk about the process of what we've done so far. A member of the. Para came in and explained the plan, he gave us a power point. Kind of just explains what it is, right now there is, if we, just if we get into the plan, there is a, uh. Incentive payment. The ten thousand dollars per plan, I believe. Per person. A thousand dollars per active member, that's sort of, just to incentivize to grow the plan, that's what they've been doing, it's a fund that's been there for. Three or four years to incentivize and they just haven't paid it all out yet, so.
If, if twenty one people, the whole department goes out, that's twenty one thousand.
Yeah, they just put it in our fund. So there was a timeline on this, we, to get, if you start at January first, twenty six, you gotta work back. Uh, the deadline for getting this done, to getting a resolution from the fire department and from the city, there's two, I actually have a. Copy. If you wanna make copies, this is a sample resolution that the SBS has. Um, and then the fire department also has to do that. Uh, we had to have that in, no, no later than. That completed no later than November fifteenth, but the clock starts, you get a hundred and twenty days from the time. You have the cost analysis done, we got our cost analysis back on. April tenth, so that puts it a hundred and twenty days, I believe it's August eighth, August tenth, right there. Um, for those resolutions to be passed. Uh, the cost analysis, what happened was, we gave them, I gave them all our current assets, a copy of our bylaws. We had to select what, uh, vesting schedule we wanted, and they came back with. Okay, if your benefit level stays the same. Here's your, you're overfunded by this much, if you increase and you could do up to four, uh, levels. Uh, we did twenty two hundred, twenty five hundred per year service and three thousand per year service, and that. They go through, run their analysis and says, okay, you have overfunded, underfunded. And really, the highest level, we're pretty much break even as far as funding goes for the plan. So they do the cost analysis, give it to us. Uh, fire department discusses it, decides, yeah, I think we wanna go that route. We have to ask for a benefit level. The city discusses it, prove it or deny it, if you approve it, you gotta approve, joining the plan, approve. The bene, the initial benefit level. Uh, we get that back to para and then. They, they do their things and two thousand twenty five would be the last year of an audit and. Uh, January first or at some point, all of our assets will get put into the fund. And then they have control that's starting in the year.
When is you guys' next fire department meeting?
Uh, the. Twenty first.
After orders.
We, as a group, have approved this, we just haven't written up the formal resolution. But obviously, we, we gotta talk, you know, the city has to, the, the, the city has to.
So speaking of a funding level that we put in, are you guys, are you okay with the level you're at right now to make this thing, is it? Gonna fund itself or not underfunded? Are you, are you? Saying that we may have to address that by adding more to what contribute?
You won't have to contribute anything, you have to get going. What is our annual?
Two thousand. We're at two thousand per year service.
Two thousand per year of service, and I would like to see it raised, I mean, to the minimum of twenty five hundred, because we're still overfunded. From para standards by over twenty thousand, and that would only be in effect, just like say, if all of us old dogs would retire at one time. You know, there's three or four of us, if we would all go, 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 and he would still be overfunded, the, the, the department would still be overfunded, so you still wouldn't have to contribute anything. Even, even that. I would, even ultimate with these, the three thousand, at, at three thousand dollars a year of service. If, say, everybody who was eligible to retire that was over fifty five would draw the attention on, I think there's only three of us right now, me, myself, my brother, and. That could actually do it, and if we would all go at the same time, then with the city would be underfunded forty three hundred sixty nine dollars. But that is also figured back in, when did we do this?
Yes, was, I think, February, that's all I was looking at. So it was done in February, when the market was still low. That doesn't cut, take into effect that twenty one thousand dollar bump they would give us, and it also doesn't take an effect to retirement and the dismissal of these. You know, these, these three other, so if they were to do another cost analysis, I think that you would probably see the three thousand, you'd be overfunded. I'm not gonna say that, but just from what we talked about and what the additional was and what the margins would do. You'd be overfunded, it would, oh, and uh, or whatsoever to the city, worst case scenario, if we went back from that, we'd be forty nine hundred dollars. Which is about a hundred and twenty dollars per firefighter.
Yeah, everybody worked to retire at time.
That shortage you're talking about, then, that is allocating three thousand dollars per year for every firefighter, right?
For years, no, no. Uh, the city currently gets three thousand a year total towards our retirement.
You were talking.
Oh, sorry, yes, the three thousand, that would be three thousand dollars per year service.
Your service. And you said that if the three, you retired, you'd be short forty three hundred dollars or something. If you take all of the firefighters together.
Yeah.
And allocate three thousand dollars for each year of service for the entire department. How short is it gonna be?
That's eligible for retirement, would be that forty three sixty six.
Eligible, yeah.
This, this, all those information is from our, 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 our center para. Yeah, this is our current asset.
Bylaws, what we're given, I mean, it's, I mean.
So they take, what they take is their benefit, uh, projected pension assets as of the end of two thousand twenty five. Uh, and then the accrued liability. So, and then that gets your projected accrued pension liability, so that. And then they projected funding ratio. Okay, so they have an actuarial study in that. So it puts the projected pension liability at nine hundred and four thousand. And then it projects our current assets and what the expected return would be. Um, and what are projected state aid, projected investment earnings, and at the end of it. I don't know, sorry, I don't know exactly how all that works when they factor in funding, but. It's like any pension time where they say, not everybody's gonna retire tomorrow, but based on the actuarial, you are gonna need. Snapshot and an actuarial study of where they think it'll be in five, ten, twenty years.
And you said, there's only three people that would actually be eligible right now, but. How many?
Perhaps.
Only, totally vested. Totally vested, then the fourth is Jim, and I think he's five years old, so I think Jim, I, I, he's not fifty, I got, but, so.
But don't you, after ten years, aren't you vested? So if you serve ten years, you're gonna get fifty percent of what you would have got.
It's uh, the vesting schedule, if we join this, is, and I would have done, uh, after five years, because they don't. The state para does not do a ten year vesting schedule. What we currently have is ten years, you're sixty percent. And then you earn four percent a year until you hit twenty. But the new one would be forty percent after five years and then four percent until you hit. A hundred percent of twenty years.
And you could drive on to your fifty five minutes. So if you're a young firefighter, you put in your twenty years, you're not gonna be able to drive out to.
You go on the deferred role, and that locks it. It does not increase. If you, if I retired tomorrow at two thousand dollars per year, they would do, I would get the. I just hit ten years, so I would get.
Sixty percent.
Yeah, sixty percent of it, and that would, it goes on a deferred role. I have to pay dues from now until I hit fifty five. And then, once I hit fifty five, I, I can request it, but that amount is set, set.
We just, uh, was it two years ago or three years ago, we bumped that up from fifteen hundred to. Seventeen.
Yeah, it was fifteen to eighteen, two, in my time here.
But you truly have, did just not too long ago.
Um. I know we had tried to talk, I, I mean, we wanted to get this on the table earlier, we're kind of running up against it because. Uh, if you guys. Make a decision to table this decision, we only have until July fifteenth to do another cost analysis. And get the hundred and twenty day clock ticking again to get done by January first. So if we don't have a decision. Uh, then we're gonna have to start to clock over, but that means kicking it till one, one and twenty seven. And that's not to put pressure, it's just the reality of.
For the fourteenth of July. We have a meeting, we have a regular meeting on the fourteenth.
If you have that.
We can't take action tonight.
No, I.
Can't like, totally seen, there's still that window there like a day.
We actually have, uh. We actually have until August tenth for you guys to make that decision, but if the decision is no, or we want to wait. Then we have to wait to get another cost analysis for a year. So that you guys don't have to take action on the fifteenth, but if.
But we have to have our big one, ours.
By August ten, so it, it's basically gotta be the July meeting, because you guys don't have one before. So if you're gonna take action, it would have to be at this next meeting.
Yeah, no, I think it's something we need to keep our eye on the ball.
If you, I do have documents here, if somebody.
I need them on digits, because they're gonna have to go into a packet, and I, I gotta make sure the council gets it beforehand.
So you want me to scan all this and email it to you?
Yes.
Yeah, from our, that is point, I think it's a win win for both. I mean, to be honest with you, I mean, like you said, it takes a lot of luck, because in today's world, it takes a lot of liability off of the.
Well, the cost of the audit is a big thing.
It's your small budget. That's yours too, but you just know as things can leap some bounds and you get the right person, they come after you, you know, it's, you know, it's.
Well, it takes the liability of, you guess.
I, I see this, the liability essence, yeah, liabilities with the state. Uh, we're not, we're not raising money to pay the accounts to do an audit. We can do, buy equipment and do things, and. The city doesn't lose any control. Yeah, the city is in the same boat they are today. You, you decide, you have ultimate decision on the benefit level. Um. And you, you're not taking on additional liability, because right now the city is liable if we're underfunded. It's. The decision is the benefit law. And not risk, but, uh, we're, we're well funded right now. So we're in a good position, so.
And the stock market's up right now, too.
At the moment.
Yeah, at the moment. So the timetable, if I understand it, if, if it's a go ahead and it passes, um, this council. Then you've got a little bit of breathing room until the August eight and pull the trigger, but if it's, if it fails. You, you gotta put the switch right away, the fifteenth.
Right, yeah, yeah, I would have to request another, I would have to request another, um. Cost analysis on the fifteenth to be able to meet the November deadline, to be able to get for one, one twenty six.
And that'd be a whole year out.
So if we're gonna take action on it, both fire department and the city need to take action on it, July meetings.
Well, that's both do, I mean, we're, we're obviously going after the twenty one thousand of all, so, because we know in twenty seven, it's. He, that's what the gentleman told us, you know, there, there's still some there, so if we can be number one, you know, top five on the list, when this January twenty sixth comes out. Very good chance, like, so we see that, which is a, a pretty good incentive.
Um, so you, will you put it on the agenda?
We'll have an agenda for the fourteenth.
So. You need to make a specific request for three or.
But I've been discussing them in transport, you know, because you're gonna send them all this information on.
Yeah, on the cost analysis there.
But in, in all reality, the way, the way the markets are, where we're standing, apart from three thousand, it's not with the, I mean, this.
Go ahead.
For the fourteenth, if we do that, we can make that two items and one for whether we're going to para. One for the level, so that we have two separate.
Solution, we'll have to have both of those. Um, and they can go a hundred dollar increments. They don't do fifty dollar, it's, so.
So you go, you can go from two thousand to twenty one hundred, you couldn't go from two thousand to twenty thou- two thousand fifty?
Yeah.
I think that would make the most sense, it's two, two separate, and then items for that, so that we can discuss both. Both on both.
Well, I will email the cost analysis, the, um. The resolution.
Yes, uh, please do that. Are you gonna be responsible for generating the resolution?
I mean, yeah, I actually, I, I replaced. Your city in quotations with Monaga, so it's essentially ready except for the benefit level. And that, okay, and who proposed it and who seconded, who motioned, who seconded?
So we'll probably discuss the benefit level first, then the resolution. Okay.
I will, I'll make sure I get this to you.
The, the form that, or the thing that we passed around, you'll scan that into.
Yeah, everything I have will be passed around, the, either cost benefit, the resolution, and then the. Basically, the power point that he presented us.
Sure.
It's, it's got some info, information in there, but.
As far as ram reading, have you guys, uh, have you explored?
Uh, the last meeting, so we have amazing. Uh, I like to talk to sort of, he was, had some phone calls.
There's place on the chair, I was gonna, expensive.
Yeah.
Thank you, man. Thank you.
Heather.
Uh, we're about to ask him to send me something monthly, so it's just for the council. Oh, yeah, I just like.
Oh, it was kind of a humor, so we're gonna get these guys one way or another.
Because I, like, because, uh, yeah, the other departments give me, uh, something for the month, right, and, uh. No fire stats, uh, so like. I'll touch base with them later. Heather, hi.
It's been kind of slow. It started off really good, and then it's kind of. We have to like one, so that's good. Um.
Next project, through June.
I. I don't, we don't have, it's not over. I don't have a human.
Yeah. I meant for.
Uh, May, it was at. Round it for me, it was twenty seven, two ninety eight and sixty two cents. Twenty seven thousand, two hundred ninety eight and sixty two cents.
Is that on sale?
That is altogether.
What's your year of date?
Uh, year to date was fifty nine, six, thirteen, nineteen.
Combined on and on?
Yeah. Um. You want them separate? Yeah, May off sale was. Nineteen, two eighty two, eighty two, and on sale was eight thousand, one hundred nineteen seventy nine.
Do you have any idea how that compares to a year ago, Heather, May, through May, a year ago?
Yeah, I usually do write it down, and I did not, because I've had some, uh. We were having some issues with the bannion, and I just forgot to write that down. And I know it was on my, um. I'm pretty sure it was on my sheet that I gave out.
Do you know if you're running ahead or behind?
I feel like we're kind of still right on the same page.
Both, both the same.
Yeah, um, obviously, now that we've got the grift done, it'll definitely bear off, but.
You've got those planned for.
Yeah, um, and I also know that there was some question in April about the card fees being off from the card surcharges. That is because, hmm, we ended up paying twice. It was a double payment that Kelly had done. She's been switching to E F T. And she had already sent a check. So they had the check and the E F T, so it equaled out in.
So we got our credit in me?
Mm-hmm. So, and then I did also kind of print these out, since the part fees come up a lot. Um, it kind of tells you how the numbers all appear, like my monthly sheet, that I gave you, the spreadsheet. Is from the first of the month to the last day of the month. The statement charges are actually the last day of the previous month to the almost last day of this month. Because they go by, the report blows out, and so they're batched at three in the morning, the next day. And also, the. Monthly report is a month behind on statements, because the statements come on the fourth of the month.
Did you type this up yourself or?
I looked at all my numbers. I printed off all the. Statements, and I looked at all the statement fees. And then I compared it, so January to May.
So what you're saying is you gotta look at the, at the card fee revenue for this month. And compare that against the charges you'll see next month.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
And how do those two equal?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah, so like, the numbers that you had in a report, or the card fees. That we pay to the company, those are from the month before.
Credit card, the credit card is used, and the fee is identified. When that money is, is the money transferred into our account the next morning, or is it weekly or every ten days or fifth?
I don't honestly know how, that would probably be a Kelly question. I don't, I don't really look at the bank account, so I don't know. Um. But I know, like, when you look at the statement, it's. I don't know if they do it by month or whatever, because it just says what they withheld, so.
I guess I'm just curious, so if you had five hundred dollars worth of credit card charges at the liquor store. Does that money transfer in or checking in, or account the next day, or, I don't know, I don't know how that works exactly, but maybe, is, do you know how that works, Mike? Part of the credit card companies handle that money, because you.
Each card company has a little different spin on how they do it. Some, uh, some card companies will, will forward your charges to you weekly, some do it daily. I mean, it, it just depends on what card company you're dealing with.
It's just kind of like with your debit card, some banks take out right away, some banks take out.
Well, midsummer, you all set for the party?
I. I did find someone a card.
Great, great.
You're off the hook, Devin Mettala.
Uh.
Mm-hmm, we got Andrea inside, Devon outside.
What band is playing?
Uh, we have FM playback, and that is Jethro Arala and, um, Trinity Junis. They are, actually, the other, no, they're up. There are the other half of, you have, I think, Drive on Friday, and that is Tim Sharp's band. They all were in band together last year, so. They, they split, and then we have the winter slaws. I kind of, I got them through Fargo. I don't know, I checked them out on YouTube. They didn't seem too bad. They play like a lot of the older and newer, uh, they seem pretty mellow.
Did you get your order in for the perfect weather?
I don't even know. I think that's the most nerve wracking part. I was doing the order, and then all of a sudden I was like, oh my God, Rachel. I've been, you know, ordering for the fourth, but I have. Midsummer on this order too, and then I had to go through it all again. But, I don't know, hopefully. Hopefully it'll be good. Hopefully it doesn't rain. That rain is what always gets us. We got lucky last year.
Lucky the last couple of years.
There was one year, I mean. Lightning, thunder, it blows everything down. Yeah, but I don't have much.
There was other questions for him.
Just on on the note of the beer cave.
Hmm.
Uh, coordination on that, you know, when it goes into, if we go into a construction phase. All right, do you have a game plan, how you're gonna mitigate? Still selling off sale with all that construction going on? Is there a plan in place for that?
Um.
No, no, Jody, you're, you got an intimate. Idea what's gonna happen there, do you?
So the way.
I am.
I'm projecting it to these people is everything is gonna get built. And then the last thing that's gonna happen is the doorways being cut between the old core and the new core, so that. New one will be fully functional and they'll cut that door through. Wrap it. Or their business loaded up.
Okay.
So there should be no interruption to offset whatsoever.
Even with the electrical part, once they open it, it'll all be, all be good.
They'll be able to run those conduits through before they open that open. Drill through them.
I mean.
You're very.
I have the same question, if we're gonna have to.
It should not end up.
Alright.
Everything's kind of in play right now, the polls are coming in.
Well, true.
Could have something for the fourteenth. Uh, my communication, uh, same thing, I told everybody, I need department reports, I need quotes, nine AM Thursday morning, so. So we got.
Hold for.
The construction.
Yep, we close that on the the tenth. They will, they close.
July. Yeah.
Love it, probably. Close the coach.
Well, I I need, I mean, I I need them by uh, Thursday, that that's packet build day, and I mean, Friday is showtime.
Also, the contractors have to have it to you by the tenth.
I gotta give it to the council.
Yeah, the idea is if we can. We can approve the low bids on the fourteenth. All local people, so far it's all local people that have been requesting info, so there's no reason concrete can't start that week. That's the plan.
I have one last question. So we're gonna be our own construction manager, right?
Basically, yeah, I'll be. I'll be highly involved with a lot of it.
Okay.
Yeah, and you don't want to be managing.
They did for many years.
You else with others? All right, thanks a lot.
Do you have any more?
Laura, please, please, come on. You're you're for posterity, okay?
You have this book we received.
The book very safe, yeah, for the for the insurance.
Yeah.
And did you receive any information from Mike Tohoudry?
He said by Wednesday he'll have something.
Well, that does actually, if you guys just say. Yeah, I don't know. I guess if we make this decision, because you have to have yours by the seventh.
Uh, well. He said that I'm good until August seventh.
Oh.
Yeah.
They, our insurance looked at yours too and said you have until the seventh, so.
Oh.
They were assuming you had until the seventh, so you must have thirty days past here.
Yes.
Oh, to buy near.
Yeah.
Oh.
So it stays bound even though there's a new uh, isn't approved.
What if?
A proposal?
So and if you're dropping a plan. You can drop, say you're gonna drop it after that seven?
I mean, uh, yeah, I mean, I told them the council, I was gonna have to approve it on the fourteenth, so. Until the fourteenth.
So this uh, so that what you have is is the insurance and um. There. We we had overall, we had an increase. I think it came to like about five percent. Um, the property insurance had increased and. Which they said was good. I mean, the the amount of increase we had was good. I don't remember um, they gave them out, but um. We were at fifty five thousand. In twenty twenty five, twenty twenty four, twenty five, and then it's sixty five thousand, so actually, I think actually in there, that's nine thousand something.
Wait, you can twenty five percent.
Seventy five, okay. Um. So they. So they had um, so our work comp actually had gone down and that's because our mod factor had gone down to sixty three. Which was really good, so it went from fifty two to forty nine. Hmm.
Well, that's just a renewal of the company you're already using, right?
So it with, it, we're not switching any of the, West Bend is going to be the carrier and S F M for. For work comp and then um, yeah, the C F C Lloyds of London for the privacy or the um, cyber. Um, insurance, so yeah, they they're all the same carriers. So it's just, yeah, renewal. Then, I I mean, we did, there weren't any changes in the insurance overall from the cost went up, but. The riders that they had kind of put in place the year before, but. There was a bunch of things, the twenty five thousand limit on um.
I remember.
Exactly, but they had, they had some things that they had put in place last year, our deduct or deductible, twenty five thousand which. On some things on on site on. Chingles or something like that, so. Some of those things um, changed, but there there wasn't any changes in that this year. It's been so long since I. Talked about it that. So the thing is, is that the current city, then we always pay a a large portion of the. Cities um. Employment liability insurance, uh, E and O. Airs and emission and employment um. Liability insurance, so. I had asked them last year, which was kind of was too late afterwards. We talked about it and, you know, they looked into it, but for me to fill out, it's a lot of applications for these. To fill out for these different insurances, so. I had asked them last year and they were going to look into it this year, so they took the policy that we currently have with the city and they did the comparison on them. Or they did the, they they came up with this policy for us. Now, they did the comparison on and I sent it to um. To Brett and who was forwarding it on to. To Michael Houdry to see how does our policy, how does this with eleven thousand compare to the city's? Policy, which that quote came back at.
Oh.
Fifteen, fifteen something.
Yeah.
Fifteen thousand something, which we pay hmm. There's like a hundred and three and we probably pay ninety, we pay about fifteen thousand, I think it came back at seventeen. So.
Oh.
We, so we pay about fifteen, so this is, you know. This is almost twelve, so that, you know, maybe there's a three to four thousand dollars difference in there. I said that it might have been higher because some years it's been higher, so. Um. But they, some things to look into was they said that. Um, they had said that some things weren't covered under this policy. But. I I see reading over it again that we do, the professional liability for nursing homes is not included in the city policy. But we do already have a policy for that. We have an employment, employee employee um, policy for professional liability. Um. And. Anyway, they gave some other things too, which I did print this off, but I didn't make copies of it, but I know. Um, you know, the city's coverage contains a potential bankruptcy exclusion. Potential, but does not extend some defense reimbursement to individual members. Independent contractors are not covered under the city coverage. Um. Is third party. There's a question they asked. Um, right now we see that the board is included as a named insurer, but not Greenwood Connections itself, which makes it appear that it would not cover a Greenwood employee. But that doesn't really make sense, because I thought it's employment insurance, but. I don't know. Anyway, that's. So we're at with it, I guess, um. This this policy, this needed to be approved, um, but ones that we currently have, which expire for us today, um, some needs to be approved. I did um. Say that we are going to wait on this from approval from. From the board, um, from the council, so I guess we wait until the fourteenth or till next Wednesday.
Yeah, that's.
Whether I tell him we're not going forward with this or not, or if you give us.
So with the city's policy on, bro, you guys, as far as professional uh?
No.
It wouldn't.
No, and that's what the thing, why, and I, in the. Policy on the League of Minnesota Cities, I did read it, because they don't really give you a policy, Michael doesn't give you a policy, you have to go to the League of Minnesota City website. To give you the policy and the policy does say that it does not cover. Does not cover nursing homes, so that's why we have our own professional liability insurance. Um, but but this is, but this one is an employment practice liability. Which we've had through the city, which we've not had in any of our policies in the past. The employment practice part of it. That's what we've always had under the city and. So that's what was quoted this year from M M A and they voted at eleven thousand, nine hundred twenty nine dollars, that age thirty nine of that. One. So that's when we're kind of, that was a debate during the board board meeting, yeah.
We're talking about, so we're not. Being redundant or. We're carrying the same coveries that your care won't.
So. He, yes. That this policy, this eleven thousand, nine twenty nine. Would be if we took this one too, it possibly is having duplicate coverage, so. But if it's cheaper, do we need to stay with the city one? Or exclude our employees and go with our own? Are we able to? That's what. I wanted, uh, that's what Michael's looking into or seeing what the policy has. I don't think it matters if we. If we have, we have all the rest of it under, I don't think it really matters. This covers, the director and officer still covers the council, the board, or any anybody who deals with the employment for our employees, it's still going to cover. But that is as well, at a at a raised cost, is that's why I said there's about three thousand to four thousand dollar. Savings that we would have taking this one versus taking. Having the city. Um, I think it comes out to be like a hundred and sixty dollars, yeah, an employee um, that we're paying and we pay for about ninety employees and there was. Hundred and three total, do you have thirteen or how many employees? Let's have more than that, about that.
Yeah.
Yeah. So something like that, that's about what we're paying. Of the seventeen thousand dollar policy that Michael has quoted, we pay about. Fifteen thousand something of that seventeen thousand for employment. It would cost us eleven thousand, nine twenty nine, so that's what I'm saying, there's a savings there. So.
I think for less money. And having all of your coverage centered on one policy.
Mm-hmm.
Is of value.
For our employee, yeah. Mm-hmm. Um, so.
It's, this just seems, it's just strange that this would be this one random, one-off thing. Where it's completely separate from.
And I honestly, I've questioned it since the time that I became administrator, like I've questioned that when Mike. When Mike Mattson was doing the insurance, I'm like, why do we pay? We pay a lot of money for insurance, so it's really strange that we pay. That we have to have to have this one, so then I was given, you know, the statute and stuff on it, like. We have to have, or he, or they said we have to have, I'm just kidding, I don't even know where Mike. Mike Mattson got the information, but said that we had to have this insurance and. Then then looking into it more than having ours look into it and other ones, they deal with cities, so. They also have, the one of them that gave the quote of city on nursing homes, and she was familiar with the new write-off that. The League of Minnesota City policy does not cover nursing homes, so they knew. But that's liability, which we already carry, so we've had that duplicate, we've had that in the past, the city has never. Carried liability, professional liability on us, it's just this employment practice piece. So, yeah, if there's no reason why we can't go on our own and nothing says we can't. Then I think. I mean, we just. Do and.
Lots of cost in one business.
Yeah.
You know. I I just, I would say for for the cost savings and having. Having that coverage centered with the other coverage on one policy.
Mm-hmm.
One insurers, it's the way to go.
So see what he says when he looks at it, gives his, gives his opinion on it, because they looked through it, their opinion, I mean, the final said we are um. They said we are not sure if the city will require you to keep this coverage with them, but as of now, it appears that their program may have some limitations. To what ours, what their insurance would include. For. For your nursing home, so.
So are you looking for Michael Houdry to quote just the city employees and not?
I I didn't ask him that, I just said, uh, I mean, Laura has a a list of things in here that I sent him and just said like, hey. Reach out to League of Minnesota Cities Insurance and just.
Yeah, to clarify them, because they they did the breakdown and I just forwarded the whole email to Brett to forward on and say, you know, here's what they said, can you make a comparison and see? If we. If we need to, or we can just go on our own line, basically, so. If we need to stay with the city one. So as of right now.
We have to approve that and ours.
I think we have to prove this tonight.
You have to not eleven thousand, so, yeah, but the rest of it, yeah.
To buy.
Yeah. So the rest of the one, whereas the other one needs to be approved, um, everything else minus the. Director and officers, and they're fine with that, they'll wait for that one, because that's a new policy, so.
Okay, I will move that Laura be authorized to commit to Marsh McLean Agency for the proposals submitted. And I I would also. Take the motion that Laura be authorized to put the D O coverage. With Marsh McLean Agency after she gets the information from Michael Houdry.
I will second that motion.
Good. You know, the software, I'll finish it up.
I know.
Post and sign, that's a comparison.
I I did have a question for you, Laura, as I went through the policy. On page ten, where it gives the list of the named insureds. Your named insureds, I do not see in Woodside Manor's list.
Because it's. Oh. Because it's Greenwood Connections. That's what the, that's what they have.
It's kind of the overall blanket.
I know.
Woodside is the assisted living and Green Park Acres is the nursing.
Yeah, I know.
Think you'd wanna tell them list.
I I.
Woodside Manor.
We can't, because. Woodside Manor name really isn't there at all. It's not, it's what we call it as assisted living apartments and we refer to it. But it's not really a name, so when the city, when they licensed our assisted living the last time and we went through this whole new licensing for a. Assisted living with services and then got, and the comprehensive license went away like a couple of years ago. They can, or the, if you look it up, it's, if you looked up assisted livings, it says Greenwood Connections.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. It doesn't have Woodside Manor on there anymore. We use it internally only.
Greenside.
Greenwood.
It's D B A Woodside Manor, kind of.
Yeah, there's not, yeah, kinda, and there's not even on Secretary of State, it's not, it's not there anymore at all, the name got taken off, so. Yeah.
The other question I have for you is. Do employees drive their personally owned vehicle for business at all?
Do they drive their personal, yes, occasionally.
Occasionally, they will drive.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, on behalf of the merc.
Yeah, and and they asked that question in our re- in our renewal. But it's not like on a regular basis, it's not. But on on occasion, they will.
Well, I I think it's covered, but I I'd like you to really ask the specific question, because under liability. It says any auto code one, symbol one, any auto. But there is a symbol nine for non-old model too. So I I think.
Page is that?
That's on page twenty three.
I'll try to ask him that.
And if you, if you see under coverage for liability, symbol one. And below there shows the symbol codes, one is any auto, but there is a symbol nine for non-old autos.
Mm-hmm.
So just. I think, I think that the N M, any auto covers the liability portion. But just ask the question, just. But just ask the question, just to be sure.
Yeah, I mean, it's a question that I answer on. The application, so.
And I know personally, protection on insured under insured motors. Uh, is the responsibility of the car owner to carry. But it's not uncommon for the, for the employer to require minimum levels of coverage. So if you haven't, if you haven't required minimum. Uh, levels, I'd encourage you to give a consideration.
For the employee driving, for the employee.
For the uninsured, an underinsured motorist coverage. For those coverages, that is not. Liability, because liability apparently is covered by the policy, but other coverages are not. Oh, and then the other question I had was on the data practice, what the heck features that? The coverage was twenty-five thousand dollars and I, I felt wondering if that was, is that enough? Electronic data processing, page seventeen.
Oh, that, that, that really isn't, that's, that's our equipment, no? So that's. Does that cover all of our computers? It, it doesn't actually. And, um, we did talk about that when we did the renewal, I'll, I'll reach, I'll ask her again because. She asked, she asked about that, if I thought that was enough, and I said, to cover all the computers that we have in our building, probably not.
Never fire.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Yeah, that is, it's not, it's not, I'll, I'll ask her on that one.
Data recovery coverage.
So that's not that.
I know it's not that, but is there coverage for data recovery?
There is a, there is a larger, so under the cyber insurance policy. I don't know, my crime.
Laura, do you have cloud backup for your, if that's all backup?
Yeah, I mean, and. It put West Central, there's a lot of stuff they've put in place, just because, and they said one of them, the reasons why they put like. Put some of it in place is because of us, because of the. The renewals we were getting, the questionnaires I was giving them to fill out and asking. All this multi-factor authentication and all this, the stuff and the cloud backup and stuff. The cyber insurance, so they had to put so much in place, because for the, for that ransomware and. Everything and the amount of training, I mean, are you guys doing the know before training? We're having to do the training, are any staff using a computer has to. And it's good, actually, it's phishing training, which is good, because it. Gives them, sends them fake emails and they have to. Send them to them. Yeah.
Well, I mean, so when we get fraudulent emails, and this happens probably once a week, right, they hit, you know, report and it. Just comes to me and then I send it to.
So it comes to you, yeah.
Yeah, I'll send it to West Central and they're like, well, you want me to do about this, I'm like, oh.
West Central just doesn't rest, West Central's central manager, yeah, there's just a fish, there's a phishing. A fish hook up there, and they just, when they, when our staff hit the fish hook, it just goes to West Central. Automatically, and they, they look at it.
But I, I'll have to talk to them, because we, we definitely don't have that.
Yeah, it's, and, and then they do that. Training for them, like the last one was like thirty minutes, which it was, I thought it was. It's informational, it's really good, I think it's good, because it's like you don't think of some of the things that. Like fake emails to gather the information and, you know, you think that they're smart enough, but. They're very deceiving.
To be very lucky, it's only thirty minutes coming from, uh, working in an embassy hours.
Yeah, but it's, you know, it's. So good, I didn't.
Of your residence, uh, financial information.
I know, that was a, so that was a question this year that, um, so based off the number of. They wanted to know how many, you know, you talk about, um. Personal identification information, like social security number, birth dates, so they asked, how many of those numbers do we think we have? And I'm like, oh, well, we get about a hundred admissions a year and, um. And we have records back to at least seven years, maybe ten, because we're shrevving, but we, we have to hold them for seven. Plus all the ones that we have and then employees, which some of that information is permanent. So there is a lot, the number is large that I'm reporting and. I'm like, they said we don't have to be exact, so I'm like, well, I can't, I'm just going to estimate at what we possibly have a number of records that we have, so, yeah, that's. But they, that, these are the questions, I mean, they're very, they're all.
What kind of coverage are they proposing for that?
I, I don't know, I did, I give them the information and then that, they put it in there for, and that's under our crime or cyber insurance, so. Somewhere in here, data breach, privacy breach, management. I mean, what is it, three million? So.
Sounds about right.
That's a big area now, with lawsuits against employers. Is failure to adequately protect. Which they probably hold to that. So, that's only an employee insurance.
We just had the.
Oh, that's right, he did it, and then he went on to ask a question. So on the flooring one, it was, the motion was made to move forward with replacing the old flooring. I don't have this for you, because these are the minutes which you get next meeting, but. Um, to replace the floor, old flooring in the activity room hallways with matching wood flooring. And the city council had the final approval of the cost exceeds twenty-five thousand, and it was about ten thousand. So, that's all, yeah.
The wood look, is that luxury plant?
Yeah, final, or whatever, yeah.
Final plant.
Yeah, that, that's what we currently have through most of it, and then we talked about putting from the. Activity room on to the connecting link hallway and then into the activity room. And I guess it's about forty-six hundred square feet and it's, we have nineteen hundred square feet. And if we purchase about twenty-six hundred, I guess, or something like that, it's. Costs about ten thousand, so.
Did you go to the flooring store?
We went to both of them for both, here and the one in Parker Rapids. We get from Monaga most of our, for our apartments, um, we've gotten most of that for that. The one in Parker Rapids actually has their distributor of the same flooring we currently have, so. They can get a lot better price, yeah, so.
It'll be quite easy to maintain too.
Yes, and it'll be really nice, it's a lot softer.
Installed by current staff.
Maintenance, yeah, they actually have already. Because we have the nineteen hundred square feet. On hand, and we could go from the doorway to the doorway at least and, and start there, um, there was like. Stopping points that we could put in place, um, they started to tear the, the boards off so that we can. Get going on it already, um, for that and then, um, get the others, so, anyway, I didn't have to. Come bring that to the council since it was ten thousand, so. That was a lot less.
Well, all right, well, thank you very much. Orange administration. Mister Brett, why am I looking at? Reports for July of twenty-five?
You're not actually looking into the future, and I, I noticed that and I wanna just. Bring your attention up here to the screen. So remember last meeting where I had, uh, what was it, April, right, because this up here said April. And. Okay, so you, okay, you'll see April right here, and really, I just, you know, wanted to fast forward to make sure we were current. Hit it a couple times and. That's why. So when you go to report writer here, where I pull this, all reports. And we go to. Budget year to date. It'll say June right now, because June's in the middle, it was just July that was in the middle, so.
But something that's really simple, look at the paper, July twenty twenty-five.
Yes. So, okay. Yes. This is.
The second question I've had for you, even if that had said June. Why would I be looking at June when the month isn't over? Why wouldn't we look at the previous month, so in June, we look at May, in Ju- in July, we look at June and so forth.
We looked at May. I already did that at the June ninth meeting, the budget review. When I hit print on this, this is a real-time snapshot as of. Six twenty-six, twenty-five at one forty-one P M, that is current to date to the minute of.
June twenty-six.
No, for the entire year, this is budget year-to-date revenue and expenses.
But it's only gonna show the activity for the month of June through.
The twenty-sixth.
June twenty-fifth.
Yes.
So I'm not seeing a full month.
At the July fourteenth meeting, you have the June end of month. In July, uh, on the.
I get it that this is a work session, but I'm trying to get, make sure into the rhythm of what we're doing, so.
Well.
Let's get over the work session, let's talk our regular meetings, so. Say at, at the July was a fourteenth meeting. You would normally give us the report through June, right?
I, I mean, I'm, I will click July and, and, I mean, if you're, if, so if you just want just the snapshot for June.
Well, knowing what it is through the year, through the end of June. That will, that would normally appear at the July meeting. For July thirty-first, up through July thirty-first would be presented at the August meeting, is that correct?
Yes, I can, I can make that correct, yes, I, I just try to give the real-time info that, the, the most up-to-date, cutting-edge stuff.
I hear that, but the trouble with that is. I'm not getting a full month picture.
Okay. Now, I can.
I can't compare, I can't compare the. Month to date or the full year-to-date activity to the budget that it will.
I, I, yes, I see exactly what you're asking, yes, I will have it just June's for, uh.
You should be reporting the previous month, is what you should be doing.
Yes. Nothing before, nothing after, so you want June one to June thirty?
No, no, I, I mean. Two year-to-date through June.
Okay.
Let's see that in July.
No, I, I. That makes sense, because I only consider the sixth month. Yeah, I, no, and I just, I was under the assumption, and yes, I know, um, that the council wanted up-to-date info. I can certainly give just the previous month up too, that's. For a work session, this works, because you were giving us a snapshot or.
Yeah, for the work session, I was okay, but for the regular, regular meetings.
Can, can I ask a question? Um, so. Do you, Brett, do you, um, put anything that you accrue throughout the year, so you have a, like a.